Hello.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Ms. McReagan.
Here.
Mr. Harrison.
Here.
Ms. Fryer.
Here.
And Mr. Parker.
Here.
So, our first order of business, it's a joyous one. We have the oath of office for trustee Jasmine Fryer. Trustee Parker, will you do the honors?
Yes, I will.
Perfect. Where's the flag at? Okay. He's by the back today.
We get. I.
I.
State your name.
Jasmine Fryer.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I.
And that I.
Will faithfully hand impartially.
Will faithfully hand impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Board of Trustees.
Of the Board of Trustees.
Of Cleveland Public Library.
Of Cleveland Public Library.
Cuyahoga County.
Cuyahoga County.
Ohio.
Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance.
And in accordance.
With the laws.
With the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And here and after.
And here and after.
To be enacted.
To be enacted.
During the term.
During the term.
For which.
For which.
I was appointed.
I was appointed.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
We have a pretty full schedule today, so there's gonna be some days we're gonna be moving out of order and such, so if you could just bear with us. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes of the Joint of Finance Human Resource Committee meeting of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. If there's no additions or omissions, I move for approval.
Ms. Bunz.
Yes.
Ms. Sackler.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Fryer.
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Yes.
We will also be moving for approval the regular board meeting of eleven seventeen, twenty twenty-two. There's no additions or omissions. I move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Bunz.
Yes.
Ms. Sackler. Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Fryer.
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Yes.
We don't have no communications. We do have a couple of comments we'll review later. So, we're gonna move into the Finance Committee report. Trustee Sackler, please.
Exhibit one, resolution to engage Land Studio Inc. to organize twenty twenty-three. Also see the also the art wall programs. Being resolved that the executive director, CEO, or is designated is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement between the Cleveland Public Library and Land Studio Inc. for the spring twenty twenty-three. Also, in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, which shall be charged to the Lockwood Thompson Fund account. Professional services, which agreement shall be subject to review and approval of the Director of Legal Affairs, so move.
Second.
We do have Land Studio, oh. Before, we do have Land Studio with us to give a very short brief. And Erica Mark, who I introduced on Tuesday as our new interim head of programming.
Oh, they have a very great presentation, but I just wanna say that we are excited about the potential new exhibit land share and I'll let it in our title.
Thanks, everyone. Erin Luino from Land Studio and really excited about this year's proposal for the installation. If you want to go to the next slide. We are proposing to work with an artist Rebecca Louise Law on an installation. Yeah, so Erin Luino from Land Studio and Vince Reddick from Reddick. And for this year's installation, we're proposing working with this artist that does these incredible flower installations and actually hosting it this year inside the, inside Brett Hall. This will allow us to actually have the installation up longer. Usually, the sea also installation is in the East and Reading Garden. But this year, we're proposing Brett Hall because we can actually have it up starting in around May, and for a year or more, depending on what the library would like to do with the installation. She's best known for creating immersive installations with natural materials. She's also very good at creating participatory events for installing the artworks and using local floral flowers. So, we're excited to work with her on those kinds of things. In addition to the Brett Hall installation, we're proposing that we would switch out two new art wall installations at the Harvard Lee Branch and the South Brooklyn Branch, and then do even one more new art wall location in a location to be determined. So, just a couple images so you can see what the, some of her past, Rebecca's past works look like. She says her work is for sharing. She makes installations to allow people to interact with nature, to give time to observe and be moved by the unique of creation. Next one. So, I think in Brett Hall, we would definitely want to have, to still allow for programming and to be able to use the space. So, some of the flowers, if not all, would be above, so you could still use the space as you wish. But maybe that we could have some components where you could walk through too. What are next? And we'll be working with local installers to make the framework. We could have participatory events with different community members to install the works, put them together. And Land Studio is also contributing funds to contribute for our time too as part of the project. Next one. And then, these are the art wall installations that are up at the Harvard Lee Branch and South Brooklyn Branch. So, these are vinyl installations that can be rotated easily, and we love the, this kind of work, of work because we can work with all kinds of artists, especially artists that haven't done public arts yet before, because all they have to do is give us a digital file and they can do a public art installation that is really of scale for the first time. And then go to the next one. And then, these are just a couple artists that we're looking at. We'll definitely work with the library to select the final artists for the art wall, but just a couple ideas. Mostly Cleveland-based artists, but we could look in regionally too for the, for the next art wall artists. Welcome any questions.
So, those are all real flowers and everything?
Yes, so they're freeze-dried, freeze-dried flowers. So, they're, yeah, they're dried out. She actually has a library of flowers, so she can bring some, and then she can use and freeze-dry some local flowers too. So, we can do a mix of local and some from her library, depending on, you know, the color and tone and scene that we want.
Most people wouldn't realize that flowers were.
I know.
Freeze.
I know. Yeah, she said, she said as long as the library wants.
And the artist is from the UK?
Yes, yes, yeah. So, she's, and she's worked all over the world on these installations. We definitely want as a part, because it's gonna be in Brett Hall, to have some component on the outside of the library to let you know, hey, there's something really cool inside. So, we'll have to determine that with, you know, the library's marketing team and the artist. But we're really excited just to, the longevity of this installation, and, you know, so many people will be able to experience it no matter the season.
So, one more question. What's exhibit is up? It is ours. She's not gonna watch this back, is that what you're saying? Like, the flowers will be ours to keep or share with public?
She would, I, I think she likes to, yeah, she, she said we could keep it up for as long as you want, but she does like to reuse the flowers. It would, the ones that survive the installation, and she can, because she just likes to reuse and recycle. So, once we are done with it, I think she would take back a portion of the flowers that could be reused, just because she likes to reuse them, but the ones that we, she can't, but, and we can keep it up as long as we want. Yeah.
If you can go back in that to the first slide, I just say, you know, I think this is a would be absolutely what our wedding folks will be. We're going back too far. But, you know, when people come into our library already to take wedding photography, they will be all over this. When you see, well, actually, I was talking about the, not the, this one.
Second or third.
Yeah, the second or third, when, yeah, the next one. That one, just imagine being, taking wedding photography right next to that, the people will be like, this'll be.
I think it'll be amazing.
Oh, yeah.
And Stephen was wanting the artist with the freeze-dried, freeze-dried flowers I really liked, so the framework will not have to be really intrusive.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Ms. Bunz.
Yes.
Ms. Sackler. Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Fryer.
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Exhibit two, resolution to accept gifts for the month of November.
Ellen, excuse me, I'm sorry. Can we jump to exhibit fourteen? Erica has other commitments, and she would like to speak on that if possible.
If I could find it.
Yeah.
Exhibit fourteen, resolution authorizing agreement with Cleveland State University for America Re's tutoring services. Being resolved that the Board of Library Trustees hereby authorizes the Executive Director, CEO, or is designated to enter into an agreement with Cleveland State University for America Re's tutoring services from January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three in an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twelve dollars. With such expenditures being charged to the Founder's Fund Account, two-zero-three-eight-zero-one-zero-three-dash-five-three-seven-one-zero, professional services, and which agreement shall be subject to the approval of the Director of Legal Affairs. And Erica, do you wanna speak before or after we, we vote?
I can speak now. So, this is for America Re's tutoring. We have had a longstanding partnership with them. They provide tutoring services in our branch locations. This year or the next year, we're looking to do between ten to thirteen locations. They typically hire about thirty-five tutors, and they do background checks for all of them, and work with students in grades K through eight, and provide tutoring on math, reading, science, and social studies.
Thank you.
And these are also available online, but different people, yeah?
Yes, yes, we do offer the, the option, the online options too.
At one time, we talked about the many of our children sometimes don't get homework to bring for tutoring. We still take them, right?
Oh, absolutely. If they do not have homework, they, the tutors have worksheets. They also have educational games to make sure their experience is enjoyable and is also building a relationship with the, with the tutors and providing educational activities.
I just call it to, to your attention because I've had inquiries, well, my son doesn't get homework. And I have to come to the library anyhow, so I hope I wouldn't overstep of my boundaries.
Oh, no.
Because it was advertised, bring your homework. Get something out there that said, we want you anyhow. I think I'll dump this and then approve.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I, I hear that a lot. Kids don't have homework, but we still want them learning, we still want to engage them in educational activities, and so, absolutely, we, if they don't have homework, still come.
So, no further question or comments? Can we move it?
You haven't moved it yet.
I move for, for adoption.
Second.
Ms. Bunz.
Yes.
Ms. Sackler.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Fryer.
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Which one do we all like?
Back to exhibit two, I guess.
Well, I was hoping we might be able to do a quick presentation from our ERG group. This was, would be in trustee Corrigan's space, but our staff is here and instead of see if we can get them back to work.
Yeah.
No rush, no rush.
I mean, I was looking at your faces, but you were supposed to go back to work.
So, John, would you introduce them?
Yes, sir. When we start, please, this is one of the good update about what we accomplished in talk a little bit about start maybe over there with that? Hi, me? Or no?
Hey, so I am Leslie Barrett. I'm helping manager and the chair of our Curcute Collective, which is a disability ERG in here at Cleveland Public Library. I do have miniature slideshow, the Curcute Effect, where we got our name, is when we designed for disabilities, we include and we make things better for everyone. And twenty twenty-two, the Curcute Collective educated staff through a town hall in partnership with the Cuyahoga County Board of Developmental Disabilities, talking about the different types of disabilities, whether it be learning, sight, hearing, physical or mental disabilities. And we continue that partnership. We brought on an ambassador, ambassador, his name is Francisco. He is a DD client of the board, and he comes to all of our programming to help assist and welcome our DD people, so they see people like them and come to us in the library. In twenty twenty-two, we also have programs with therapy companies. We had Adaptive Paint Party. We had a North Point Ballet Adaptive Storytime. We had a Storytime at the Glenville Branch that was encompassed through American Sign Language and Bill Morgan of Cleveland Sign Stage. We also had our Sparkles of Joy at branches. Lexi Kamcheck has graciously hosted those. We've had three of those so far, and we continue those hopefully for the duration of twenty twenty-three as well.
Tell us what Signs of Joy was last week.
Sparkles of Joy is kinda like Make-A-Wish, but it's made through Make-A-Wish Foundation of the Northeast Superior Chapter, where children of disabilities and who have leukemia and are terminally ill come to the library. There is one photo there at the bottom corner at the Rice Branch. They come, they have a specialized adapted storytime crafts and play at the library with their families. In twenty twenty-three, we will continue those programming. We are looking at bringing a large print library application to CPL for those community members who come in, wanna get a library card, but can't necessarily read everything on our application. We're also working with Will Scora on web access, web content and accessibility. We are looking to also do a CPL environmental scan on our services, our programs, our buildings, to see where we are when it comes to being accessible for our patrons and where we can go. We have had conversations with John Malcolm about adaptive technology. We are on the calendar to meet with Mr. Lang and FMP about accessibility to our branches, and we wanna continue to include and be more accessible for our community members that need us.
Good morning, good afternoon. I'm Jaime de Gleda, the branch manager of the South Branch, and I'm the chair of the Latina Santos organization, which is the Latinx organization for the library employees. Twenty twenty-one, we secured presentations by Ammore Consultants. Two are gonna happen, two happen this year. There will be two more next year, and I believe two more to follow. We've also participated in countless community events. Last year, we purchased over three thousand dollars of books that were given away at different community events this year. And I believe that.
Day of the Dead, we definitely gave away a lot of books.
Actually, at the Day of the Dead, this year, we give away over six hundred books through the parade. And actually, this year, we've given over eight hundred total between different events. And we're looking to do the same for next year, so we already have a purchase end, and we also have been working with the Hope End in order to secure more books.
I'm Steve Capuzzo. I'm the Jefferson Branch Manager, also the Chair of the Rainbow Readers, which is the LGBTQIA+ Employee Resource Group. And we were very active and visible in Cleveland this year. We went to a lot of events. I'll highlight a few of them here. In February, we presented a collection of books, of LGBT themed books, to the Beyond Identities Community Center, which is a drop-in center for youth of color at the AIDS Task Force of Greater Cleveland.
Where is that located?
It's on Euclid Avenue, maybe just on the other side of the freeway, twenty, thirty.
Thirty, at the Rafferty.
They have a new, they opened a new space across the street from the task force, like just before they open, gave them a shelf of books, and it's a really nice space for them to go and hang out and be safe. In March, in partnership with Plexus, which is the LGBT Chamber of Commerce, we sponsored a film at the Cleveland International Film Festival. We lined up a panel discussion with the help of folks in the literature department and Ohio Center for the Book. The film best brought in the film director, and we had some local experts, and we did a panel discussion after the screening. That was really a good time. Aaliyah Lidle from GovDocs kinda spearheaded that partnership. She did a great job. In June, for Pride Month, we were especially busy. We went to a number of events. We marched in the Pride and the CLE parade, which stepped off right in front of main library here. So, my knowledge is the first time in March in the parade, and that was really awesome. We also hosted a Who's at the Festival? We made hundreds of buttons for people, and we gave out like rainbow CPL branded rainbow swag. People were very excited to see the library there and to know that we're a welcoming space for everyone. Also, during June, we appeared at the Teen Pop-Up Pride, which is held at the AIDS Task Force. And we also hold it, hosted a table at the Pride and Joy event, which is held in Gordon Square. The final Pride Month event we helped at was the No Ceiling Drive with Pride, which is held here in the In October, we also participated in the Pride Ride. We got to decorate one of our library teams, and we prayed it through the city with other organizations. That was really an awesome time. Last but not least, we hosted a table just this past weekend at the LGBT Center. They're clear the halls, it's their artist and market and Winterfest. That was coordinated by Eric, by Eric and Sean Services. Looking forward to twenty twenty-three. We're excited about participating in a lot of these annual events and keeping our radar out for other events that might be able to show up bad. And we're also gonna try to focus on another part of our mission, which is staff education and training. We're looking to line up a speaker to do like a staff town hall webinar, like other here, to kind of bring some light to some issues in our community. And this would be possible without a team upper. Other departments have certainly supported our efforts, which is great. And I'd like to like to thank our executive sponsor, John Skerritt, our co-chair Adam Tully, and our officers, Michael Oaks, Lisa Sanchez, and Allison Collins. Thank you.
One question. One of my friends is a trans woman who made the film Exact Change, and one of the things that she did in her one-woman play before it turned into a film, and I think it's in the film too, where at the end, she gives the statistics on trans youth and their attempts at suicide is very, very high, like forty percent or something.
Right.
And I was wondering, I mean, I feel like art, it's so important to educate in schools and to everybody, you know, how vulnerable these kids are. And right now, it's a terribly persecuting time in our country, right? For that whole community.
Yeah. Personally, I feel that, just from growing up. And so, that's something that it feels very important that we show that the library is a safe and welcoming space for everyone, you know? They don't have anywhere to go, or, you know, so just to, to be at these events, to show that we're a welcoming space for everyone there.
Yeah, I just wanna applaud your efforts, because it's so important.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
Nice and good.
My name is Valerie Johnson. I'm a library assistant, new campus at Union Branch. And I am the chairperson for our women's ERG talk, talk one Tuesday. My executive chair is myself, Caroline Peet, Senator Jelar Elwell, and Senator Karen Grisell. And our executive cheerleader is Shanice Johnson-Tymas. We currently have ten members, and we're always welcoming new members. This year in February, we had two successful Lunch of Mars for Heart Health Month. In March, which is also Women's Surgery Month, we supported the women's program that was held here down in Maine. And we also had four more successful Lunch of Mars. In October, we had a breast cancer awareness along with the mammogram bill, which was over at the Memorial Ninety-Ham, Memorial Ninety-Ham Branch, in which gave the community the opportunity to have self-examinations. Our work in progress is our menstrual equity advocacy, which we hope to become CPL policy. But more recently, we're excited to know that money's are, were allocated in the property management budget via John Lane that would allow feminine products to be available in the stockroom for branches to order. Place the restrooms to our pages to see staff members to receive the products. We do not have an information date as of yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do the job, man. Go back to him again.
Hello, everybody. I'm Seth Vola Parkovich, manager of International Labor Department. ERG, my sponsors here. This year, we were invited to the Lunar Year Program at Asia Plaza in February. We attended fantastic turnout, had a great time. In May, we attended with marketing, the Asian Festival, had a table there. We were mobbed, literally mobbed for five straight hours. It was great. People threw a lot of love towards CPLs, was good to be there. August, I came out with COVID, couldn't make the One World Day, but the rest of my team came up and supported the event, made a great turnout, made some buttons. Really hit of the show, I guess, so people loved seeing us there. In November, we had Indigenous Equals Day. We actually had a staff education race, where you have a new speaker, come inform our staff how to think, talk, and, you know, visualize within Americans, we are society. So, it was a great educational moment for me, and I think everyone who attended walked away a better person. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, happy holidays, everyone. My name is Martin Betney. I serve as the Chair of the Applied and Play Resource Group under the administrative leadership of Mrs. Parks. And I just wanted to share with you a few things that we did this year. Either we, either presented, or we were dating partnerships with some other organizations. The first one was the Juneteenth Celebration on Mall C. We had a table there where we had craft activities as long as, as well as button making, button making activities. You'll be happy to know the visitors to our table were very pleased with the programs and services the library had to offer. More importantly, the staff at the local branches, they were more than pleased with staff at the local branches. This past November, we hosted a virtual prostate, prostate health awareness program, which was primarily for our staff. We had about almost forty people who attended that program, and we got a lot of positive feedback as far as from our staff. And going into twenty twenty-three, we'll be looking to do other stuff like that and build upon that. Coming up on December twenty-eighth, we're gonna be doing a Kwanzaa program at the NOK Branch.
All right.
With the focus being on the Third Principle of Kwanzaa Eugene, which is collective worker responsibility. So, if your captains are available and you're free, we definitely invite you to come over. And again, in twenty twenty-three, we're looking to expand on our programming services that we offer.
Tell us again the date and place.
That'll be the NOK Branch on December twenty-eighth.
Of twenty.
And time from two to three-thirty, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
We'd like to make this an annual thing. We're just amazed by the energy of everyone who works together in this system. And people volunteered to be in these committees because they wanna make a difference. And this is just like a snapshot of what they do all year, so thanks, everyone.
It's very helpful to hear all this.
Oh, we're making you go back to work anyway.
Yeah. Thank you, trustee Sackler, for giving me that time.
Yeah, I think that's so cool, you know, because we're always talking about our diverse communities and all of our diverse programs. So, this is a good example, effort to be on our record. This is just a little bit of what we're doing year-round, so that everyone understands how much it everyone understands how much and where we are in our communities and how much we're trying to-
Above and beyond.
Oh, yeah, doing a great job, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Seifullah, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I said, if we get a chance, not trying to give anybody any work, that's for sure. All the things Lance Suriel has done, and this last one just blew my mind.
Love it.
I'm gonna collage somewhere with all this stuff in the whole wall.
That'd be, that'd be nice of the-
History of our stuff.
Yeah, all of their different presentations, that would be good.
Over the time, we've been working with them, and some of the artists.
Yeah, that'd be great. Skirik? Every time, Trustee has to say, I'm not giving anybody any work, I'm gonna give somebody some extra work, so, God.
I have a finger partner, John.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and continue with the finance, yes?
Our Exhibit 2 Resolution to Accept Gifts for the month of November. Being resolved that the gifts described in the gift report for November 2022, accepted upon the conditions connected with said gifts in accordance with Section 3375.40K of the Ohio Revised Code, so move second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 3 Resolution Authorizing Transfer of Funds from the General Fund to the Building or Repair Fund and to the Debt Service Fund. Being resolved that from the General Fund, unencumbered balance, a set aside of $10 million can be transferred to the Building or Repair Fund for capital and technology improvements and other capital projects that include the repair, renovation, and construction of the library's buildings, and that the set aside of $3,282,149 and 90 cents for debt service payments be transferred to the Debt Service Fund in January 2023, and the remaining General Fund unencumbered balance carried forward for operating expenditures, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
I can't even vote, Ms. S.C. Carey.
She's on Zoom, yeah.
Is that okay, Carey?
I'm, I'm here, can you see me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Exhibit 4 Resolution to Advance Cash from the General Fund to the Early Literacy Fund. Being resolved that the Board of Library Trustees is authorized as at the General Fund, advanced cash in the amount of $47,214.58 to the Early Literacy Fund for the same purposes for which the fund was established, and for which repayment and equal amount is made within a year or until our requests for reimbursements have been received, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 5, 11th Amendment to the Year 2022 Appropriation. Being resolved that the sums indicated in the attached 11th Amendment to the Year 2022 Appropriation Schedule be approved, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 6, Year 2023 Annual Appropriation Measure. Being resolved that the Year 2023 Appropriation Measure in the amount of $65,276,234.37 for the General Fund and listed amounts for other funds be approved as detailed in the attached schedules, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 7 Resolution Authorizing Amendment to Agreement with Unique Management Services Inc. for Material and Cash Recovery Services. It's being resolved that the Board of Library Trustees authorizes, Executive Director, CEO as designated, enter into an amendment to the current agreement between Cleveland Public Library and Unique Management Services Inc. for Material and Cash Recovery Services from January 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2023, incorporating a budget-neutral guarantee at the cost of $7.95 per account referred in an amount not to exceed $19,884.85 from fees recovered plus amounts waived, which expenditure shall be charged to General Fund Account 11100053-53710, Professional Services, and which agreement shall be subject to review and approval of the Director of Legal Affairs, so move.
Second, and only if I can make a record here, as we've developed our relationship with Unique over time, we find that we're not recovering as much money as we thought when we first started, but we recover many more materials, so the net gain to the library is probably in excess of what we would recover if it was funds.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Bunz?
So it's work, it's working, it's worth it, in other words, yes, I'm-
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 8 Resolution Authorizing Maintenance Agreement with Integrated Precision Systems Inc. for Video Surveillance and Access Control Systems. Being resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Cleveland Public Library hereby authorizes the Executive Director, CEO as designated, enter into an agreement with Integrated Precision Systems Inc. for support services of the library's security cameras and access control systems in the amount not to exceed $69,640.84 for the period commencing January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, subject to the approval of the Director of Legal Affairs, with the expenditure being charged to 12930053-53340 Building Maintenance, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 9 Resolution Authorizing Agreement for Moving Services related to the main library high-density mobile storage project. Being resolved that the Board of Library Trustees hereby authorizes the Executive Director, CEO as designated, to enter into an agreement with Corrigan Moving and Storage Company, no relation to our discordant, DBA Corrigan Moving Systems, in an amount not to exceed $218,860 for moving services and shelf cleaning, which amount shall be charged to the General Fund Account 19010053-53710, Professional Services, and which agreement shall be subject to the approval of the Laborist Director of Legal Affairs, so move.
Second, and as we pointed out at the committee meeting Tuesday, this is the achievement of, of the planning we did when we built this building, that we have these high-density floors and are able to relocate literally tens of thousands of books to make them more available and to preserve them better, and, and it's really significant that the cost we incurred for making this building possible to do this high-density storage has now been fully realized in the sense of savings and improved services, so on, and for those who weren't here Tuesday, Michael Ruffing has offered a tour to anybody at any time to see, because it's really an interesting project, and if you care to know more about it, Michael Ruffing-
I was just gonna tell Jeff in case you didn't hear that.
Yeah, so.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 10 Resolution to Ratify Purchase of Promotional Items for the Cleveland Reads Campaign. Being resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Cleveland Public Library hereby ratifies the purchase by the library on December 6, 2022, from Scranton Road Promotional Marketing for promotional items to be distributed to patrons as part of the Cleveland Reads Campaign for a total amount of $72,088.30, with the expenditure being charged to the Founders Fund Account 20380102-52900, Other Supplies, and further declares such expenditures to be of proper public purpose, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 11 Resolution Authorizing Upgrades to Lewis Stokes Way and Public Elevators. Being resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Cleveland Public Library hereby authorizes the expenditure of $109,675.64 with Coen Inc. for upgrades to the three public elevators located in the Lewis Stokes Way, with the expenditure being charged to the General Fund Account 12100053-53310, Building Services, and authorizes the Executive Director, CEO as designated, to execute any instruments or agreements as are necessary to effectuate such expenditure, which shall be subject to the approval of the Director of Legal Affairs, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
It's gonna make it safer, a rope gripper makes it safer.
Mr. Seifullah?
$109,000 of rope grippers.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 12 Resolution Authorizing Blanket Purchase Orders in Excess of $25,000. Being resolved that the Board of Library Trustees authorizes fiscal officer to issue a blanket purchase order not to exceed $50,000 for purchases from Best Buy Tire and Automotive Service LLC for the year 2022, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Exhibit 13 Resolution Amendment Project Budget for the Lorraine Branch. Being resolved that the Board of, the Board of Library Trustees approves the amended total project budget for the Lorraine Branch as set forth in Exhibit 8 to this resolution, and be as further resolved that the Board of Library Trustees authorizes Chief Operating Officer to reallocate the budgeted amounts set forth in Exhibit 8 from the owner's contingency funds, insurance fixtures and equipment, owner direct costs and architect fees as needed, provided that such reallocations shall not increase the overall project budget for the Lorraine Branch, and be as further resolved that the Board of Library Trustees authorizes the Executive Director, CEO as designated, to move forward and take in the steps necessary to repair the Lorraine Branch and to execute such instruments or documents as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the terms of this resolution, including those in excess of $25,000 and which are payable from the project budget admitted herein, so move.
Second.
I do have one question, when we talked about this on Tuesday, I don't think any of us asked the question about whether this affects, I mean, I'm sure it could affect when we're gonna reopen that branch, and, but I don't actually understand why this should affect the construction budget, I mean, we're gonna get insurance-
We're gonna pay our deductible of $25,000, and like we discussed Tuesday, the library chose to hold the in-construction builders' risk policy for Lorraine Branch and all the FFP projects, rather than put that on the construction manager, because we get better premiums. So it's true that all the, all the expense of the repairs should come back to the library less deductible, however, that will take some time, and we need the budget authority now to authorize the construction manager to proceed with repairs, that's what this resolution did.
Right.
We had hoped to open the Lorraine Branch in March, or on exact date now, but I think it might be April, so the order magnitude of the schedule-
So it might go to April instead of March.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's a couple weeks to a month delay, it's not-
Not that, they did delay, thank you.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes. Exhibit 14 Resolution Authorizing Agreement of Cleveland State University for America Re's Touring Services.
We did that. And that's one, that's one we took out of order at the beginning.
Did we vote on?
Yeah, we did.
But I must have missed something.
You voted, yeah.
I voted twice then.
Yes.
Yes, you did.
John, we're on the same page. We're all. Exhibit 15 Resolution Authorizing Amendment to Agreement for the Removal of Existing Chiller at Lakeshore Facility. Resolve that the Board of Trustees authorizes Executive Director, CEO as designated, to amend the agreement with the AK-18 Inc. order to increase the fee by $742.50, thus bringing the total contract to an amount not to exceed $43,632.50, with the expenditure being charged to the Building and Repair Fund Account 40141105-55300, Construction Approvements, and which amendment shall be subject to the approval of the Director of Legal Affairs, so move.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
By the way, this is fascinating to me, that the refrigerant can be stored and reused eventually, in what way it's stored or whatever, because it's very expensive to replace.
It is, we, we know that, because before we did the Lakeshore Chiller replacement, which this was approved last year, which this was part of the overall project, we were having to recharge it frequently, and so it's expensive.
I'm voting yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
The rest of my report is fiscal officers' report, Report A, Report on Investments, Report B, Report on Conference, and Travel Expenses, Report C, Report on All Events, and their expenses, Report D, Report on Expenditures Made from the Owner's Contingency Funds for Hops, Jefferson, West Park, Woodland, Central Distribution Facility, Lorraine, Eastman, MLK Junior, Brooklyn, and Rockport Branches, Report E, and Report on Expenditures Made from the Owner's Contingency Fund for the High Density Shelfing Project, Report F.
Thank you, Trustee Seifullah. At this time, I move to adjourn it to executive session for the purpose of discussing the performance and compensation of a public employee, and for the purpose conferred with counsel to discuss pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Seifullah?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.